Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled meeting, or rescheduled meeting from yesterday. I do call this meeting to order, it is 6:00. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement, please.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take a role for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Ellen Keeland.
Here.
Scott Perchatsky.
Here.
Dave Shamble.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. You have three items under the consent agenda. Those are the, there are no additional handouts. Are there any of those three items that council would like to see moved to the regular agenda, where we would vote on those separately? If not, we would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, we have our regular agenda, and we actually just have one item under that, so it will be a presentation from our city administrator. Again, we would need an approval of that regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fenske, second by Keeland, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. I did want to recognize Dave Peterson, he's actually in the audience tonight, and he will be our new alderperson, taking Dave Shamble's place. So, Dave, Pete, welcome. And Dave Shamble, if I don't get a chance to thank you, thank you very much for your years on the council.
You're welcome.
All right, I'll turn it over to Henry then, he wants to give us a little history.
I mean, this meeting could have been over, but...
Absolutely. I didn't predict you would be the one to say that, I thought Dave would. But, you know, we just want you to have and experience the joy of being a council member for as long as you can.
And we were all thinking it, by the way.
You had little bubbles coming out of your head. But, in all seriousness, I talked to the mayor a little bit when we had the draft agenda out, and it was pretty lean, and we were talking a little bit, and I threw this idea out of kind of reviewing what we've done with strategic planning in the past, and, you know, what do I hope to accomplish by this? I guess a couple of things. We're kind of deep in this effort right now, in a lot of areas. Council's going through some economic development strategic planning. Aaron's doing some needs assessment, I think the library's gearing up. And I'm sure there's people out there that go, "Well, why do you do this?" I mean, it just, you know, you're gonna do all this, and a report's gonna sit up on the shelf, and nothing's gonna come of it. So, I guess, I thought, well, let's go back and review. You know, I have not done this, myself. Like, when we do a retreat, I kind of go back to the most recent one. So, it was quite interesting, it was even entertaining, I chuckled a little bit when I read some of the stuff. And actually, one of my other goals is, what better way for a new alderman to kind of get up to speed on what we're doing? Now, a couple of you were with us on the start of this, and we started in 1999, Paul and Brian, and then, most of you have been on council since, maybe '08? Yeah, I might get that wrong. But, I think this is all good review for you as you move forward on your other efforts with economic development and the like. All right, so, please, I'm gonna apologize if I screw up. Okay. Well, Camp Onaway, I was back in 1999, and this was the first time we got together. It was a fun process from my standpoint, I thought the attendees got a lot out of it. We had some non-council members attend, Dave Johnson, we had our IDC back then, and I believe Dick Dance, our former library board chairman, was with us. And we really had two goals there, to create a mission statement and develop some kind of planning guide for the future. Here's what this mission statement looked like, and most of you were involved recently to update what we have, and I'll show you. But, it's long, but there's themes in there that will come up again, and again, and again, and we just reinforce them when we talk about this. So, it seems to me these are very well ingrained elements that we have here in Wapaka. But, it's pretty wordy, and it tried to capture a lot. All right, the planning guide. Watch this. All right, at the end of the process, we developed some projects, and you're not gonna be able to see these very good, can you? That, you know, mid, near-term, midterm, and long-term. I can't even read them. Let me hit a couple of them. In the near-term, we talked about Riverview Park design, street rehab. Can you go to 120%? John? Airport development, we wanted to create a webpage. Can you imagine in 1999, building webpages? You know, webpage was a big thing for organizations to have. Oh, yeah, we're not even at 100. It's better. You wanna expand it? So, we wanted to continue work on Swan Park, back in '99, that project, I think we had just acquired the property, and we were working on that. Intergovernmental cooperation, update zoning ordinances. Now, we've done some patches, but that was, we've been talking about that for a long time, Brennan, fixing our codes. Midterm, improve municipal facilities, you can read them, youth center. Yeah, it's even smaller. There we go, thank you. Industrial park, at the time, we did not own on the south side of 2254, or Royalton Street. Again, operate a webpage midterm. Animal shelter. Paul and Brian, remember, we were having problems, and Jim Smith came up and worked that deal with the animal shelter to try to make that problem, address that problem, so we were working through some of that stuff. Cemetery expansion, long-term. Street rehab, the bypass is now, while it's in midterm. We're talking about the bypass, John, you'd been on board with us a couple of years, and you were working that project. So, we were talking about things, and trying to get a plan of action together. Okay, two years later, notice the date, about two weeks before 9/11, boy, did our world change then. But, we had, we were out at the retreat at Nature's Edge, and we were there to kind of review what we did in 1999. We discussed water and sewer rates. We hadn't really done much with those, and looked at them, you know, in a more holistic process. We tended to go many budgets, and then raise rates fairly large, and we were talking about going back and doing more periodic increases. And then, we kind of reviewed our city's debt picture. Back then, we were indebted at about 3.55 million, and we were at about 26% of our debt capacity. So, these are all kind of things we were currently talking about. And then, we updated our mission statement, a lot more workable, isn't it? A lot more readable. A lot of the same things are in there, and a lot of what our current mission statement says is contained here as well. So, we've carried that forward through the years. You know, promote business, supporting recreational and life-enhancing opportunities, planning wisely. Then, after 2001, oh, we got a revised planning guide. What we did here is, we kind of put projects in those five categories. revised planning guide, and it's actually two pages long. You can see that, you know, business and industry, finish the airport project, buy, lease the Hendrickson Center, develop City 6 programming, you can read it, you can read You know, business and industry, in the midterm, you know, a lot of these projects, right, are gonna go over multiple horizons, just because of the nature of them. Okay, 10 years, if we look 10 years out, 2011. Renovate downtown buildings, continue work on the bypass, I guess we didn't think that would be done. River Ridge Trail, Swan Park, aesthetics, maintain, enhance our inland lakes. Continue work on industrial parks. So, a lot of these themes kind of continue down, you can kind of see, yeah, go to the next one. City facilities, and staffing in the near-term, again, this was in '01. Additional library staff, create a position of community development director, make a decision on the armory, develop a new senior center, midterm. You can see, we wanted to continue to work on city facilities, on the staffing, study need for a full-time City 6 manager. So, you can kind of see, there's a method to our madness when we, you know, do things, or the public reads about things we're working on. I mean, many of the things and initiatives kind of come out of these processes that we work on. So, the Nature's Edge planning guide, Foxfire, this was more, and this was in August, this was more just setting things up for the budget process that year, and we, there was no formal report. We did involve some committee chairs, again, Dick Dance was involved in that, Larry Obiala was involved. And there's some things we talked about, and we focused a lot on capital, that retreat, you know, we discussed pay-as-you-go, leasing versus purchase of rolling stock, establishment of a rainy day fund, implement new user fees, consolidate dispatch services. And then, we talked about tax relief, and that we needed to look at that, and I don't have it on the slide, but I did pull the information. In 1998, our mill rate was $11.60. In '99, it went down to $11.33. In 2000, it went down to $11.05. In '01, it went to $10.65. In '02, it went down to $10.29. And in '03, it went down, it stayed the same. So, for six budgets, we reduced and kept the mill rate level. So, on that very first retreat in Onaway, that was identified as a threat, our taxes. So, Foxfire, not as glitzy, maybe, as our other events, if you will. Then, we moved to Baymont Inn and Suites, and this was in 2004. And we started early, because I think we knew that we needed to do a lot of work. Tom Wilson was still with the extension, and he facilitated us on that process. We did, in '03, do a very extensive project, most of the staff is here that was involved in that, but we did a pull-back-the-onion, turn-over-every-rock kind of review of our services, and that took many months, but we wanted to understand our cost wasn't, it wasn't an easy process, because it wasn't just all numbers, right? Because there was qualitative data in there. And there was some things that, you know, were identified, and recommendations from staff, and some of them, the council adopted and moved forward on. But, you can see, we rewrote our mission statement pretty succinct. Then, we came up, and Tom wanted us to write a vision statement, and this was interesting for those that participated. Remember, we all had to write our own. And then, a group that was, who was that? John, and Peg, and Larry Obiala, and myself, hashed all of that out in a meeting, and came up with this. I like to think we are moving towards this, and take this very seriously, in how we conduct our affairs here. So, I think this helps us, as I'm speaking as a staff person, anytime you need to check what we're doing, you kind of go back to this, you go back to these work plans, and say, "Okay," you know, we talked, you know, this is, you know, to kind of, you know, double-check that we're on the right track. Okay, project priorities at Baymont. Okay, oh, I had them backwards, I'm so sorry. Okay. Go to short-term, you gotta go one more, Josh, and then we'll have to go back. I had these backwards. Okay, short-term. Police department renovation, replace upper shelter and bathrooms, you know, that took us a while, but we got there. Full-time information technology position, zoning code rewrite, East Gateway interchange zoning, we do have that in place, we have created that. K-9 unit, unfortunately, we didn't continue that service, Tim, but, you know, the county has taken that on, and that service is there for us. Paint City Hall Library, you can read them. You know, some things we identified, and we haven't tackled, and some things we have. You know, it's, you know, it's not 100%, well, nobody bats 1,000, so. But, sesquicentennial was on this list, because the date was coming up, and we needed to get ready for it. Midterm, public works facility, revolving loan funds, small businesses, and you can see, a number of the things, we did undertake, a new telephone system, squad videos, parking And then, the long-term, Josh? The city pool thing will not go away. It was in '99, stuff. And I think Aaron's hearing it in his stuff, too. Lakeman baseball upgrade, that's, you know, in our five-year plan, as it is now, that's, it's just at the staff level, council hasn't adopted it yet. Swamp Park baseball expansion, that got done through the generosity of Mr. Overby. And you can go on down. So, these, or 10 years ago, we identified these projects. And again, I think, on balance, you know, many of them have a big price tag, so that's naturally hard to undertake, but we have, we have seen some success. Then, we go to '08, there was about a four-year lag at the time. And this was out at Fox Valley Tech, and Mike Colas helped us with it. And we kind of had a couple goals there, we wanted to look at the mission statement again, and vision, to make sure it was adequate. The mission statement didn't change, the vision statement was tweaked a little bit. Remember, Deb, how we worked through that at the Fox...
That time we...
I think we haggled over one word. That's the one, that's the thing that made me chuckle.
It was a wishy-washy word, I don't remember what it was.
Yeah. We, you know, before the retreat, we sent out a little survey to get strength weaknesses. And I will tell you, if you pulled that stuff out, it looks just like what you guys did two weeks ago. I mean, that's what's so amazing, the continuity of how even different elected officials, and even staff, that get pulled into a new process, we coalesce around a lot of the same stuff, you know. We came up with strategic questions, this was Colas's way to kind of, it was new to me, but kind of a way to frame, you know, how we want to do our work plans and stuff. And we developed 15, but seven were identified, and then, we kind of went down that road of those seven questions or needs that we were gonna address. And then, we wanted to talk about our CIP, and we went through project lists, and, you know, staffing needs, and that kind of thing. Okay, values. I think this is, you know, really the heart of why you're on the council, and want to be on the council. Certainly, it drives us as staff, but these are values that were identified, that should govern, really, pretty much everything we're doing. Again, this was at, this was in '08, but I think it's still very pertinent today, and you'll see that these themes have continued on through to today. All right, wanna go back to...
PowerPoint?
Yeah, PowerPoint. Oh, no, 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 no. Go to the next one, it will be, project work plan priority. Yeah, oh, God. Okay. Everybody's heads tilted, are you dizzy yet? But, we came up with, in '08, you know, and I don't, I'm trying to go back, the downturn hit in '08, but, right, we weren't quite feeling it in '08. You know, our budget wasn't impacted that bad, state budgets, we kind of lagged into this thing, and so, '08 wasn't, you know, as dire as '09 was.
As a matter of fact, the founder gave an extremely rosy picture, and then about a month later, I think it was...
Actually, yeah, he was at that retreat. Remember, Gary Giganti was there, and he told us about what was going on. But, we have on projects, road rehab, marketing for economic development, South Park Upper Shelter, public works facility, there's some staffing needs, down, didn't get many votes, was a volunteer coordinator, grant writer, media specialist, which I guess is Josh, maybe? Recreation supervisor. So, those were things that were kind of in the bullseye for us in '08, that we were looking at, and trying to build some task around. And then, one of the strategic questions, and, you know, some of this history, you know, isn't always pleasant, but there was some, at the time, some staff and council dynamics that were a little disruptive, and council dynamics, and we, you know, brought in some people to mediate a little bit, and help us with that. But, we also talked about how we're running our council meetings, and how to make the council more effective. So, if you go to the next page. And this was one of the strategic questions. What actions can be taken to improve meeting attendance and council productivity? The consent agenda is outcome of that, desire to try to improve that. And you can go down the list, you know, there's, you know, have two council meetings per month, and have only the committees that are required by law. So, this was a thread that was talked about five years ago, and it's now implemented. So, you know, it takes time sometimes to get things in place, but, again, there's reasons for much of what we do. Are some committees relevant, like WIN-TV? At the time, we did abandon that committee, or abolish it, or whatever. So, that was a strategic question that I thought was interesting to share with you. So, the next one. And out of that effort, we came up with, that's the second page of that, maybe you wanna, yeah, and then, second page? Go to page 12, yeah. And then, we came up with, you know, staff did presentations to the council, and at this particular retreat, you know, we tried to prioritize projects, and you can kind of see where those are at. It was a little more readable. But, we did develop a project list. The total requests were about 1.4 million. Oh, no, I'm ahead of myself. Okay, this is talked about, the prioritizations, projects, council productivity ideas. Then, two years later, we met at Fox Valley Tech, and again, Mike Colas was with us, and we reviewed the 2008 information. And then, we had some folks from Brown Deer come up, talk to us about their capital planning process, and we didn't come out of that meeting with a set CIP, it was more, set the stage, and then, when we got into the budget process, we would get going. And then, well, all right, so then, we get back together in... Okay, so, in 2010, we got back together, and this was more or less sort of setting the stage, and again, no actions taken. We didn't put any major projects in the budget for 2011, at that point. And then, we had a retreat in early 2011, and then, this is where we picked back up on the work we did in 2010. Most of you were on council that time, so this is probably, you know, you're remembering this. And we prioritized projects. We ultimately came up with a list of 900, totaled 920,000, it was for two years, and then, 100,000 of that, I believe, was cash-funded capital. The number that we borrowed changed slightly, Gene, it was not 820 we borrowed, I think we borrowed like 790 or something. So, we tweaked it a little bit, but, point was, we approved two years of projects. You're not gonna be able to read this, but this, these were the original list, which was about 1.4 million. And then, the council pared it down to the $920,000. Think, the very last one, if you go to the, well, let's, it's a value, can you guys read it? Those are all the projects on the left, and the cost is over, you can kind of see the cost. The next sheet, backwards, were the cash funded projects, what we were going to spend the 100,000 dollars on. And again, this is something I know council's talking about now, is trying to put back a little bit of, you know, back in the budget to kind of do these kind of purchases, because it doesn't make sense to borrow for a lot of this stuff. And then these are the bonded projects. It's all bringing back memories, it's fairly recent. Remove foot bridges on there. And...
We weren't going to bond for that, we weren't going to pay for that.
And then the last one, I, I don't know if it's instructive, but these are the projects that did not get funded. Remember, remember in the Shell Park Shelter design, you guys all loved it, and, you know, I'm kind of long-faced, I'm long in a tooth, and you guys go, well, you can get, you know, you can pursue it, but you're not going to get any city money. So, it happened through the generosity of a lot of great businesses around here and individuals. That was just an amazing one. But, you know, there's a, there's a lot of things here that will probably stay on the list because they, they weren't funded, or will have to figure out a different way to fund it, like, I know at Aaron, the ballpark lights, we have it on the list, but see it as fully funded. Is that the one, fully funded through donation? Maybe I'm mixing that one up. Yeah. So, you'll probably see those again. Talked about that, okay. What I did here, this is sort of a little bit of a deviation, but as I was reading into this, I thought I'd try to do a little bit with it. Our very first retreat, it was identified as a, as a threat was our tax rate and our taxes, and I explained just a few minutes earlier that six straight budgets we reduced or kept the mill rate level. So, I thought, I think Alan, you made the comment a couple weeks ago, what the hell do my taxes pay for? I'm paraphrasing, but that's what you asked. So, I put together some, a little bit of information. Okay, this first, this first slide, what I'm trying to do is, you know, I, I have the feeling that maybe this tax situation is a little bit of a, I don't know, I can't find the right word, is maybe more perception than reality, but perception is reality a lot of times in our business. But, what I tried to do, and, and this isn't a perfect way to do it, but a 100,000 dollar home, when we budgeted in 19, for a 1999's budget, the mythical 100,000 dollar home would have paid 1,133 dollars in taxes. I called the Department of Revenue and Assessment Office, and I was trying to figure out a way to kind of show our journey in this last 15 years on taxes, and this was something that was suggested, why don't you look at our equalized value reports and those changes? And I looked at that and focused in on residential only, I didn't look at commercial. And every year, this middle column, you can see in some years, look at those property, the rates, the market rates were going way up, look at '05, 7 percent, '07, 6 percent, and then the dive, 10 percent over five years. But, assuming nobody does anything to their house but other regular maintenance, 100,000 dollar home would now be valued at about 122,300 dollars, and they would pay about 1,200 dollars in taxes. So, over 15 years on that particular, if I was still in my house and doing that, I would pay 76 dollars more, and I didn't even try to put net present value to it or do anything, like if I was doing this back in 99 or anything. So, over a 15-year period, my taxes went up 6.7 percent. Now, that's not precise, but not bad thumbnail to kind of say that the council's actions through the years, and that particular question has been, I, I think, more than reasonable on your decisions on taxes. Now, to the question to Alan of where his taxes go, all right, this is '08, gotta go, go up, I did backwards again. Can you funnel up, go to the next one? Should be 2014, okay, and then we're going to have to work backwards. But for this year, getting on that mythical 100,000 dollar home, you're going to pay 82 dollars a month in taxes, city taxes, and you can kind of see the breakout. Police and EMS, together, fire, emergency service, about 25 percent. I'm going to note, John, in that your cost on taxes is higher now than it was in '08, I'm going to go back to '08, right, because we've lost so much shared revenue. And you can kind of see how the pie is divvied up, and then if you look at, that's 1841 on our debt. Now, we have debt that's not in this slice of pie, I moved it to police department because we're paying debt for police, the police building, and so it seems reasonable that that should be slid over there, and we have debt on the rec center, and that's down in here. So, this is all sort of geo-debt that we're supporting on the TIF districts, and just general purpose debt, like on the borrow that we did, you know, those are big building projects, I could put them over there, I mean, to really find down on this, you know, what we borrowed for the trucks could eventually go over here, and this was, I only had three days to throw this together, so I, this could be done a little better, but you can see sort of the breakout, and some of this debt here could be allocated to some of our other departments, mainly public works. To show it differently, here's a little pie graph that shows what, what services are principally funded by property tax, obviously, look at the debt service. And in this budget, because the capital projects fund had a surplus, we had to kind of show that to make the numbers work, and recreational debt programs was like about a 4,300 dollar surplus that helped towards all these other costs. You know, but some, some services are, you know, less reliant on property taxes than others, I think, you know, everybody kind of understood that, but that's a little graphical picture. This allocated revenue, what, what that is includes like, you know, interest, some general shared revenue that's not like specific to one kind of function, like public works, roads, and, you know, some other kind of general purpose revenues that are spread across all functions, and there's a formula we use on that, but that's, that's now, go back to, I'm going to go backwards to '08, and you can see in '08, the debt service pie is, is pretty similar. Police is a little less, because in '08, we had just an interest payment on the debt of that building of about 33,000, so the principal wasn't kicking in yet. And, you know, parks, I think, is pretty similar to where we were before, because the building project was done and we were paying, paying for it. But you can see John's lot less reliant five years ago on property taxes for his functions. So, you know, the other departments, this one is higher, do I have them? I think, oh, oh, you know, I want to say something about my area, this is higher in '08 than in presently, because our debt, our CDA debt for this building's in this number, and it's like 100, what is it, 150,000, 160, 120, sorry, and that's pulled out of there now. So, that slice of the pie is, is less, getting less. So, you know, again, you know, this isn't down to the penny, but it's a good idea of, you know, kind of how we distribute the tax dollars in, in the city, and we were doing a lot with capital then, but, you know, it was a different day, so, hopefully I haven't bored you, I don't have any closing statements or anything, I'm willing to take questions, I just, just thought, as you move forward, having some of this history, as you're making your decisions and trying to set the vision for the future and where we want to go, that this could be helpful to you. Plus, the mayor didn't want a two-minute meeting.
Oh, put the blame on me, Henry. Thank you.
I have a question. Will we be having another retreat?
Well, I, I, I would ask that council consider it. We got, the debt policy's coming forward next month, Brad's going to come and talk to you about that. We have a capital list, and I think we wanted to maybe, as a staff, get back together with you and do that. You know, we've done these things in all different ways, remember, we do it on a Friday afternoon, evening, and then Saturday, you know, weekends are important to folks, we had done it on a Thursday afternoon one time. I don't know, I, I sense that maybe the second and fourth Tuesday being open is maybe an opportunity to do this kind of stuff, and that you are okay with that kind of meeting, I, I don't know. That's certainly something, you know, staff would be ready to do, and maybe sooner than later, so you're not starting to budget in September, October and going, you know, it's probably something we should start in the summer. Anybody else have any other questions? Thanks, Henry, very informative.
Just communications recommendations of the mayor before I let you go. Remember that our next meeting is our reorganization meeting where we swear in the individuals that were just re-elected plus new electees, but we also reorganize our committees, and as we all know, we went to the two meetings a month for the council, so the main four committees are no longer in place, but we do have other boards and commissions, and I'm asking you a couple of things, council members, one, and even staff, too. One, what commissions and boards would you like to see yourself sit on besides the, besides just sitting on city council? And I'll go through a couple of these just to give you an idea, and then also, if you have individuals that you know in the, in the city or the surrounding area that might have some interest in being on one of these commissions or boards. Just to give you an example, the airport board, we have two individuals that have served, one, very long time, served on the board, who is, is no longer, he's going to retire from the airport board, and we have a second one that also has, is not working in the area as much, so he would like to step down. So, we have two openings, and those are public at large. Board of Appeals, we have one individual that we need to replace, that is again, public at large. I'm not sure, Greg, are we, are we good on the library board, right? Yes? Nope? Okay, awesome. But I mean, the people, okay, and Parks and Rec Board, obviously, Davis is retiring from here, so we'll need to replace him, but I think all of the people at large are still good on there. City Planning Commission, as far as I know, the only one that we really need to replace probably is Dave Shamble there also. Historic Preservation, you're okay still there, Deb, good. Police and Fire Commission, we do not, the only individual that is up this year would be our alderperson, which is Steve Hackett, and I'll talk to him. And that's about it, but if you are interested in switching to any of these committees, let me know, and if you know of any individuals that might be willing to serve on some of these boards or commissions, certainly let me know on that, too. Okay, we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Hagan, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is April 15th, Tuesday, April 15th, at 6 o'clock, subject to call. Brennan, go ahead.
And there is a committee to hold meeting next week for your third session for Strategic Plan for Economic Development next Tuesday night.
6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
Okay.
Where's that going to be?
That'll be in the library rooms, A and B.
Okay, sounds great. We had a motion and a second, right? Okay. All in favor, signify, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, it is 6:45 PM, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending.